Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 18, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting. And the first item up, I would like to invite you to join if you choose to, saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much for joining us on this gorgeous, sort of feels like, first night of summer. First item this evening will be Audience Comments. If you have signed, there is a sign-up sheet going around for anyone who would like to address us this evening. If you're here on behalf of a group and you are spokesperson for the group, it would be great if you stated that. If you're an audience member and you support the speaker and the points that they're making, please raise your hand so council understands who's here for which issue and how much support is there. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address the council this evening. When your name is called, please come to the lectern and state your name, address, and relationship to the city. There is a lighted timer that sits on the dais with you, and when it's flashing yellow, it's telling you're getting close, and when it hits red, it means you've used up your three minutes. Please address your comments to the seated council members and myself. Do you know, I'm trying to see if I've missed any of the directions?
I think that was perfect.
We're good, okay. So has anyone signed up this evening to speak?
I have several. Susan Neville.
Thank you, Susan.
Hello. Thank you, council members, and Mary Lou Polly, Mayor Polly, for being here this evening. I have to breathe, hold on a minute. The month of June is a meaningful month for Save Cougar Mountain Initiative and all the involved residents. One year ago, every Issaquah City Council member voted against the Bergsma-Winward Development We took a stand, you took a stand, and voted no to destroying acres of important old-growth forest on a highly visible portion of southeast Cougar Mountain. You voted no to building in critical areas, filling in wetlands, and building a connector road from Tallis to Newport Way. One year later, we are asking you to stand behind your original decision. The current Bergsma-Winward Development Plan includes all three of the original critical area variances, the construction of the connector road, and the removal of 8,000 truckloads of topsoil. Nothing has changed, except the new plan requires more variance modifications by adding a fourth stormwater vault, which are all located within the critical areas, more retaining walls up to 20 feet high, all this in hopes of stabilizing the mountain. One year later, five of the current City Council members in front of me made the first decision to stop this invasive development, and you're all sitting here today. Little did we all realize the important decision this would spark and the support of hundreds of residents. Our active email list has grown to 1,400 residents. 1,700 residents have signed a petition in support of the acquisition and citing the view shed and open space as number-one priorities. The Save Cougar Mountain Initiative collected enough donations to hire a lawyer and submit an extensive MDNS document showing the adverse effects and the impact to the environment and the mountain this development would make happen. We realize this is a difficult acquisition due to the complexity and increase in property values, the price to preserve this area for open space, and parks in general. But help with the, but with the help of King County and Washington State, this is achievable. In June of last year, you told us our voice counted. You took a stand and voted to protect our valuable mountain forest and open space. We hope the same is true today, one year later. Thank you for your time and your commitment.
Thank you, Susan. And there are several hands and signs going up in the audience. Thank you.
Tyson is next on the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tyson Garbageuk. I am the owner of Booms Candies and the property owner of Booms Candies. We are located at 225 and 255 Northeast Gilman Boulevard. I'm here to speak in the regard to the changes being considered to the designation and zoning at the end of Northeast Gilman Boulevard, including two of our properties. As you may know, Booms Candies has been a family-owned company for over 76 years, including 62 in Issaquah. Over these years, we've employed a few thousand people, including many high school students who are just starting out in the job world. In addition to local customers, we also welcome travelers from Eastern Washington and tour buses daily, spending money not only at Booms but at other local establishments. We have been proud to be part of this growing community. In these times of more sales going to online and chain stores, we take pride in our family-owned business and our gourmet confections. Issaquah has grown and thrived, especially in the last five to 10 years, but like many small businesses, we've, we have challenges in front of us, ranging from higher property taxes to finding employees to the hard cost of being a brick-and-mortar operation that manufactures wholesale and retails confections. In order for our family business to be sustainable for the long term, we know we are going to have to make some improvements on our properties. But by removing, but by being removed from the central area, we've lost, we've lost some of the opportunity that we had and will be faced with lower building heights, greater setbacks, and a lower maximum impervious surface threshold. Though we don't have to make any improvements at this time, we do believe that the replacement regulations being considered will seriously impact what we can do with our property, and that in turn feels like a threat to our long-term viability. I know that the process for establishing the replacement regulations has just started, and it hasn't been in front of the council yet. The PPC will be taking them up this Thursday. Booms is asking the city to seriously consider our needs and to work with us to make sure that whatever is done doesn't threaten the, threaten Booms Candies. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson.
Geraldine Carey.
My name is Geraldine Carey. I live at 955 Seventeenth Avenue, Northwest Issaquah. I'm here today because I just want to say, I want to thank the City Council and Mayor Polly for supporting the, taking, taking the city's interest in not developing the many homes that they were going to put on the Bergsma property. I think that my, my sign says "for all," and if we keep it green, many more people than 52 homeowners can appreciate it. So I would, I would hope you support, again, not to allow the property to be used for residential homes. And I know it's not particularly your voice right now that, that will make the difference, but if it comes to your attention, I hope you will support the people who would like to see, see it kept green for all the people of Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine.
And last on my list, Julie Clark.
Lots of hands and signs in the air.
Good evening. My name is Julie Clark. I reside at 915 Bear Ridge Court, Northwest, in Tallis, and I am here representing Save Cougar Mountain. And as Susan Neville had mentioned earlier, it was one year ago that the City, Issaquah City Council denied the Bergsma-Winward Development Agreement. I want to thank each of you for participating in the discussions and making that decision. I know that the residents of Tallis and the neighbors along Newport Way felt that you had listened to our concerns and supported us. We appreciate your decision. Due to the fact that the Issaquah Municipal Codes have not changed, I understand that the council cannot tell the Winward developers that they cannot build. However, I thought it might be helpful to be reminded of some of the reasons the council gave that evening last year for denying the DA, and ask each of you to consider if those reasons might still resonate today. Here are the quotes. "A lot of land would be pulled off the hillside." Following the Tallis Parcel 9 landslide, I thought, "Why would we ever build on any of our steep slopes again?" "The public risk and public cost is pretty high." Impact to the forested hillsides, traffic impact, slide hazards. These are all reasons that the Issaquah City Council voted to deny the development agreement. At this time, no work has been done on this property. None of these concerns have been eliminated. So why would anyone want to see the northeast corner of Cougar Mountain built out? As we understand, the current scope of the work the developer has made public, the impacts of the development would be very similar to what was at risk with the development agreement in terms of reconstructing the hillside. 84,000 cubic yards of soil would be removed, filling in at least two wetlands, reducing the buffer on salmon-feeding streams, destabilizing steep slopes, slide hazards, 57 homes to be built. Dow Constantine stated in his Land Conservation Initiative just a couple weeks ago, "Saving these places and creating green space for all is important to our future, and it is as important as investments in affordable housing, or in transportation, or in any other aspect of infrastructure." Please use the resources necessary to acquire the Bergsma-Winward property and save Cougar Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And there are signs and about a dozen hands raised in the air in support of Julie. Is there anyone who did not sign up this evening that would like to address council? I will ask a couple of times, you did not have to sign up ahead. Second time, anybody liking, anybody else wishing to address the City Council this evening? And last time, anyone wishing to address council? So we'll close Audience Comments, and we will move to Committee and Regional Reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee meeting on June 14 last week. We discussed several items which are recommended for action at the June 27 Board Meeting. The first one was the update of the Lake Tap System Model Contract Authorization. This is a model to assess the reliability of water supply under different conditions, and the software is several years old, and there's a need to update it with new data. And the other item was updating and maintenance of a GIS contract, and discussion on this focused on how the member cities might work with Cascade Water Alliance, as member cities also have GIS capabilities and could help with the inventory potentially. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Services and Safety Committee met on June 12. We took up Agenda Bill 7600, which was an inter-local agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for the maintenance and use of the High Point Trailhead. That will be on today's consent agenda. Agenda Bill 7617, an inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for Incident Management Team participation. That is also on today's consent agenda. We took up Agenda Bill 7394, the Park Strategic Plan. That will be on, on the July 16 Council Agenda, Regular Business. We also received a briefing on the Senior Center, and Parks will be coming back to Services and Safety either in July or August with an update, as we know more about how that is evolving. And then we also received an update on the Economic Development and Economic Vitality Commission, biannual update. And the next Services and Safety Committee meeting will be July 10 at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Councilmember Goodman and I both attended the June 14 Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting of significance, was an update by the chief on PFAS in the water and remediation efforts. And then of special note, particularly to Council President Marts, was the donation of a DJ1 M210 drone from Barbara Hammer to the Eastside Fire and Rescue to assist with, with the rescue efforts. It was very impressive, the, the level of visibility that this drone can provide to our, our rescue workers, particularly on rivers and in wooded areas. And that concludes my, oh, the next Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting will be on July 12 at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. The Infrastructure Committee is set to meet this Thursday, as usual, at the third Thursday of the month, but the start time has changed from 6:30 to 5:30. So those coming, please come an hour earlier so you don't miss all the good stuff. The items on the agenda are all pending consent calendar approval, so hopefully they will be there. The first one being AB 7621 Old Town Traffic Commune, which is taking our pilot study into a proposed permanent solution. And AB 7637 will be dealing with, again, water quality and our PFAS pilot study and work there. So those two, remember, 5:30 on Thursday, not 6:30. concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Last Thursday, June 7, I met with the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board, and we discussed during our pre-meeting SCA caucus, preparation for topics to discuss at a pre-Sound City Association Public Issues Committee pre-meeting workshop on July 11. So the topic will be for the, the PSRC's Vision Update. Also, in the board meeting, we did recommend passage of the scoping report for the Vision 2040 update. So that process to update vision really has started and will run through about two years from now to 2020 to complete that update. It'll be called Vision 2050. And a major part of the vision document is something called the Regional Growth Strategy. And the balance of our meeting last Thursday was spent breaking into groups and kind of brainstorming a lot of issues related to the regional growth strategy. So this will just be the first of multiple sessions where we discuss that, and we should be wrapping up our, that portion of the vision update, at least from the GMPP perspective, this fall. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Winterstein. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Land and Shore Committee met on June 7, and we had four items. Two of them are companion items. The first one is Agenda Bill 7614. It's called High Street Conversion up in Issaquah Highlands, and the proposal is to, by the developer, is to vacate High Street and turn that into a linear park/trail. And its companion bill is Agenda Bill 7480, West Ridge North Preliminary Platte. And that platte, the Northwest Ridge Platte, is the development that the High Street Conversion is related to. It's a quasi-judicial matter. Both of those items were, are coming back for a second touch at our next Land and Shore meeting. And then we, our last two items were Agenda Bill 75, 75 Timber Ridge Easement Modifications. And that we viewed as sort of a housekeeping item, and that would be coming, I believe we recommended it for a consent, consent agenda at a upcoming meeting. And then the last item, Agenda Bill 7612, Amendments to the Code Regarding Transfer of Development Rights Resulting from the End of the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement, and that is on the consent agenda for approval tonight. And that was just amending the code to match what we did with the replacement regulations when we ended the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement. Our next meeting is July 5, 6:30 here in Council Chambers, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Council President Marts.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. SCA Public Issues Committee met last Wednesday. We did not have any action items, but there's a couple things that I'll mention that were in updates. An update on the King County Land Conservation Initiative. The big news there is that the big effort currently is the open space equity objective, of which we get no piece, because it is for cities that either don't have any open space or aren't adjacent to any open space, that have a massive open space deficit, and they have a very nice map, and we are not included in that map. There was a conversation about the Count Us In vote, formerly One Night Count. That occurred in January, but we got the numbers. We talked about the fact that 5,792 people were sheltered in transitional housing or emergency shelters, 6,320 people were outside. In general, we were up 4% from the last year. Sheltered was actually down, and the reason that it was down is there is an ongoing effort to move away from transitional housing, and so to move to permanent housing. So in the future, they expect that number to keep going down. Emergency shelters are different, but there's a focused effort to move away from transitional housing. There was some good news. Three specific areas where there's been a lot of collaboration between federal, state, and local governments. Veteran homelessness was down 31%. Second is homelessness among minors was down 22% from last year. And finally, family homelessness had decreased 7%. So there was some good news. And then the final big note from that is that although it was 12,112 people were found on January 26, the actual total number of people processed or captured through the region's homelessness management information system, approximately 30,000 people per year. So that while the snapshot had 12, it affected about 30,000 people last year. Finally, I just want to thank Councilmember Ray for mentioning. I'm excited to hear more. I want to see this E4 drone. I actually flew the little cousin of that DJI last night for Father's Day with, with my son and my wife, so I want to hear a lot more about it. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I didn't see drones on your original report, but we'll give you a pass on that. Thank you, Council President Marts. No more committee reports. Going to the mayor's report, I apologize, it's a little long tonight. There's been a lot of stuff going on, and I want to give a significant update on our strategic planning process. Going over a few of the meetings that I've attended since our last council meeting. On June 4, I met with the business and elected leaders of the Southeast Alliance of Cities. Discussion focused on how the cities can work with Issaquah to provide a focus set of transportation priorities to the state that would resolve the gridlock on Highway 169 in Issaquah Hobart Road and other regional connectors between these cities. On June 5, I attended the Strategic Planning Community Charrette with council and community members to review the five main priority themes that were distilled from our community engagement activities. On June 6, I attended the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust Board Annual Meeting, and will begin as of next month, serving as an advisory board member. On June 12, I attended a PFAS meeting with interim city administrator, the Department of Ecology, and Eastside Fire and Rescue. PFAS is the constituent that has impacted the aquifer, and we are working to jointly study and address the issue. On June 14, I attended the PSRC Transportation Policy Board Meeting. There was a discussion-only item related to accessibility to transit, and PSRC has been tasked with developing technical products to improve access for pedestrians and cyclists. Next meeting of the Transportation Policy Board will be July 12 at 9:30 at PC, PSRC's boardroom and their offices on Western Avenue. The major topic will be recommended selection of projects proposed for the 2021/2022 Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration Fund. I'm sure that won't be really well-attended, and a lot longer than the one we just had. On June 14, I attended Sound Transit's Capitol Committee Meeting. And this evening, before our council meeting, we had a special council meeting, and it was to introduce our council to our new city lobbyists team, who are still here this evening with us. We're really excited to be working with the team, helping Issaquah to get our community voice heard in Olympia. Community outreach, on June 6, I attended the Visitors Information Center and Issaquah's Familiarization Tour of Trailheads in Issaquah. We're promoting ourselves as Trailhead City and the place to come hiking. June 13, I attended a ribbit cutting for the Agency Northwest, which is a real estate company in Issaquah Highlands. A couple of issues update. First, Cougar Mountain-Bergsma update. I'd like to share some information that the council, I received, and the council received last week, an email from Sam Plotkin, Trust for Public Lands. Trust for Public Lands has completed an option-to-purchase agreement on a portion of the Bergsma property. This option provides for, provides an avenue through which the Trust for Public Lands can negotiate to acquire additional portions of the Bergsma property through a secondary agreement. The next steps for the Trust for Public Lands will be to initiate an appraisal, and now that the option has been completed. A little update on the southeast 62nd Street Road and Bridge Project, and if you have a graphic you can share with the group. I have provided council and, I have provided council and also the public this evening a graphic to give you some updates on our southeast 62nd project. This is our project over by Costco, the one that closed the, our secret little undercrossing of I-90. Really proud that staff is able to report out that as different components of the project are completed, they're being opened. So the first component to be completed is the Pickering Trail from Fourth Avenue to Issaquah Creek. It was paved on June 15, and the city plans to open the trail between Fourth Avenue and where the trail turns north on the west side of the creek on June 21. So you can see that section shown in yellow on the plan. It is not the East Lake Sumamish Trail, but it is that portion of the trail which can then connect you into Pickering Place and Costco and our amazing farmer's market. So really proud of staff to, that I can share that with you this evening. Some updates on our strategic planning process. We are making progress, and we wanted to thank all the 1,300 individuals who provided input through our survey meetings, pop-ups, and focus groups. Following the completion of this broad community engagement in May, we've been working with our consultant, BDS Planning, on two pieces. One, updating the city's vision, mission, and guiding principles, and two, identifying community-based strategic priority areas. We need your input to help us shape these priorities, or your input helped us shape these priorities. We now want to come back and check with you to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. We held our planning charrette on Tuesday, June 5. We involved over 50 folks from our community, including council staff and representatives from many organizations who provide services in our community and are involved in our community. A full range of sectors was represented, from arts, culture, and human services, to business, development, and housing, as well as recreation, environment, education, and more. Thanks to the community input and the work of these participants, we are starting to form five draft strategic priority areas. These are growth and development, mobility, infrastructure, environmental stewardship, and city leadership and services. We want your feedback. We want to know if these sound right to you. Are we on the right track, and is there something significant missing? There's a survey on these strategic priority areas available online. Please visit issaquahwa.gov/OurIssaquah for a link to the survey. You can also learn more and provide input in an open house this Wednesday, June 20, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Historic Train Depot in downtown Issaquah. The City Council will consider the draft strategic priority areas at its work session on June 25. I'd like to provide an update on the potential Highlands Elementary School. There's been a lot of discussion over the last year with the school district and with council. This Issaquah School District has been looking at a piece of city-owned property located at Northeast Discovery Drive and Sixth Avenue Northwest in the Issaquah Highlands as a potential site for a new elementary school. As part of their due diligence, in assessing the site for school construction, the district retained consultants to perform arborist and geotechnical studies on the site. The results of the geotechnical review were presented to the Issaquah School Board of Directors and discussed at the June 13 meeting. The school district has decided not to pursue this parcel. Additional information is available on the school's website at www.issaquah.wednet.edu/district/departments/capprojects. And we can provide that email if anyone is interested in it. And that concludes the mayor's report. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar. It was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove anything, any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion? Council President Marts.
I, I move to adopt, adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove anything, any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion? Council President Martsch.
I move you adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda this evening, under regular business, is AB 7632 Lobbyist Contract. This is the first time that this item has come before council. I'd like to invite Emily Mu, interim city administrator, to make a presentation.
Good evening. I have only a brief presentation for you. Based on the materials in your packet, you can see that the city administration is recommending approval of a contract for new lobbyists for the city. We have had lobbyists serving the city for more than six years. Our lobbyists, individuals, or firms advocate for our interests. They monitor legislation, seek funding for capital and operating budget needs. They craft beneficial changes to legislation that we might seek, foster partnerships, and track interim studies and task forces. City administration has found that this use of lobbyists is very effective. In fact, we have been successful in securing millions of dollars of investment in city infrastructure and services over the years. We are, at this time, recommending entering into a contract with the firm Gordon Thomas Honeywell's Governmental Affairs Group. Brianna Murray and Shelley Heldar are here this evening. You had an opportunity to meet them in the special meeting ahead of this regular business meeting. Both have extensive experience in this arena and have represented other local government clients. They have a proven track record of accomplishments and we think they're a great fit for our city and for our legislative agenda. The contract that's in front of you is for three years, which is our standard term, and a maximum annual amount of $58,000. That's the same amount that we've had in our contract with our previous lobbyist, and it is the amount that has been budgeted for this fiscal year. So with approval of this contract, we will execute the agreement and get underway with our partners and look forward to having opportunities for you to engage with them in the future. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. And thank you for coming this evening and addressing council. It was great. Are there any questions? Or a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the contract for lobbying and advocacy services in the amount of $58,000 with Gordon Taylor Honeywell.
Second.
I said, I'm sorry.
I'll repeat it.
Okay. I blew it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? I'm just going to clarify the name when I read the motion. Name on the contract. Okay, no discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the contract for lobbying and advocacy services in the amount of $58,000 with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Honeywell, yeah, see, it jinxed me. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this evening, ladies. The next item on the agenda is AB 7599, the 2019 to 2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. This item was heard at the Council Infrastructure Committee. A public hearing was conducted at the June 4th, 2018 council meeting. I'd like to invite Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, City Council. Happy to be back. As you know, we discussed this six-year transportation improvement plan at the June 4th meeting. We had a public hearing at that time. The hearing was closed. There were a few audience comments and questions. What you see in front of you here is the six-year project list, the subset of a larger list, but these are the projects that we are most focused on over the next six years. And I'd be happy to, I think, rather than go through each project, which we did some last time, I'd be happy to do that, but I would rather use this time to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kurt. Does council have any questions? And Bill, did you have any comments you wanted to share?
No, just, I'd like to clarify, the writing in here, update one, says that staff discovered that 11th Avenue Northwest was left off. Could you get a little more description of that? Because I don't see that title as stated that way in the TIP.
Correct. So the 11th, thank you, Mr. Ramos, for that. I did want to clarify that. So the 11th Avenue project is part, is one of the avenue projects which are generally south of Gilman on the west side of Central Issaquah. There are actually connections planned for 15th Avenue, 13th Avenue, and 11th Avenue, and those are all north-south connections that help complete the grid. They're generally in this portion of town right here. So the 11th Avenue project, we're not sure what happened, but has always been part of the plan, 11th, 13th, 15th. For some reason, it was not on the latest TIP. It's been on previous TIPs. It's always been a plan for projects that's likely to be constructed as redevelopment happens in that part of town. So we're not adding a project. It's just, it's reinstating a project that has been there in the past.
So what's the actual number on the list?
I'm sorry?
What's the actual project number on the list? The only thing that says 11th Avenue there is 1112th Avenue, I-90 crossing.
So this is a, probably have to look back on the list to get the exact project number. This is not one of the projects you'll see on this map here. This is a project in future years. It should be way down on the very, almost bottom of your overall list.
That's TR 050, fourth from the bottom.
Yes. So way down there, not that that's when we're going to build it, but that's where it is located. It's not shown, none of those avenue projects are shown on the map that you have in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Any other questions? And would someone care to make a motion?
I move to approve resolution number?
2018-10.
Adopting a six-year transportation improvement program and directing the same to be filed with the state secretary of transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sir, Councilmember Ramos.
I'd just like to say, because I think people see this and they sometimes read it a little differently, because we say in here a lot of times that these aren't prioritized projects. It's a list of projects, and they're not prioritized. But when you see them in the list, it looks like to everyone that they're prioritized projects, particularly ones that have money closer to a year near here than further out. So maybe you could just explain that little twist a little bit so the public can understand that prioritization or list.
Sure. So I think both of those statements are true. This is not a prioritized list. Clearly, as you look at the list, you'll see the projects at the top of the list, which are the ones shown up here on the screen, are the projects that we have proposed funding for, and they are the projects that we're currently either in design or shortly will be in design, certainly within the next six years. So certainly, those are prioritized in terms of staff focus and the city's focus, the projects you see on this list, but they're not prioritized in the sense that they're in a specific order. And we certainly have the ability, council has the ability, the committee has the ability to move projects around on this list, and any projects that are in further years out certainly could become part of this six-year plan.
And when we're thinking, just to clarify again, this list is a requirement, if we ever want to look for funds, grant funds from federal dollars and those kinds of partnerships, we need to have this filed properly or that couldn't happen. Is that correct?
Correct. This is a state law requirement that we have a six-year TIP in plan to show that we have a plan for transportation improvements. It's essential for many grant opportunities that we have this in place and adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. Any other questions? So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving resolution number 2018-10, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program and directing the same to be filed with the state secretary of transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion postponed from our June 4th, 2018 council meeting. That motion was to direct the administration to reevaluate the permitted land uses table 4.3B in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards and to make recommendations to the city council as to whether changes are needed after the moratorium is lifted. This motion was made at the May 21st council meeting, moved by Goodman and Bateese, and postponed to the June 4th and then the June 18th council meeting. Before council discusses this evening, I'd like to invite Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director, to come to the lectern to present the options in the staff memo that was included in the council packet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So when the council was working through one of the related moratorium work items related to hotels and storage units, the council posed a question about whether or not the administration should go back and look at the existing list of allowed land uses within Central Issaquah to see if there's any other uses that are allowed now, which might want to be revisited and looked at again. And so, at the time, the motion was tabled until the administration put together some options about whether or not we could fit it into our work plan this year and what might that mean. And so I provided the council with a memorandum dated the 29th of May, and within that memo, basically present three different options for the city council. One is to pursue this this year, and that would mean potentially moving around some of the other things that we have on our plate to make room for this work item. The second would be to do it next year, in 2019. And then the third option would be to do it potentially as a bigger look at Central Issaquah, which we know we need to do, which probably won't happen till 2019 or maybe 2020. So, and as you guys think about those options, one of the things that we need to talk about is the scope of this work effort, because we really didn't talk about that. At a minimum, what's being identified in the memo is we would need to go to Planning Policy Commission twice, most likely, once as a presentation and once for a decision. We would at least need a couple council committees to talk through that, and then one full council meeting for a decision. So that's what I've included here. If there's an expectation that there's a bigger public outreach, obviously that would impact, you know, if we're going to move something aside, I think, you know, that delays maybe three months. If there's a bigger work plan envisioned, you know, then that would be a bigger delay of whatever it is we have to move out of the way. So I'm going to stop talking and let you guys ask questions if you'd like to.
Great. So I just want to kind of remind everybody where we are right now. So there's a motion on the table. It's appropriate at this time to ask questions or to begin a discussion and deliberations before we call for a vote on this motion or an amended version of this motion. So let's start with questions. I've got Councilmember Hunt, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I had a question about the note under option one. So if the council were to entertain option one, there's a note about the U.S. Supreme Court Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision, and I wondered if you could explain that and explain also how, if the council were to entertain option one, how that would work in terms of the timeline for the sign code and the timeline for the land use overview.
Okay. So right now, there was a Supreme Court case related to Town of Gilbert, Arizona, where the courts declared that a city cannot regulate its signage based on content. And this really focused around cities like ours, which allow political signs in the right of way. Vote for me. And a church kind of wanted a similar sign in the right of way to advertise one of their Sunday congregations. And, you know, the city declared that they couldn't do that because it wasn't allowed. And so they pushed that, went to the Supreme Court, and the justices decided, you know, that was inappropriate, unconstitutional, based on, you know, free speech. And so our code needs to be changed, because right now it allows for political signs in the right of way as a temporary sign, but it would not allow, you know, a business or a church similarly to do the same thing. And so we know we need to make that code change. Where it gets a little bit more complicated for us as a work plan item is we right now have a multitude of sign codes in the city. We have a sign code for Talis, we have a sign code for Issaquah Highlands, we have a sign code for Old Town, we have a sign code for Central Issaquah, we have a sign code for Rowley's, and we have a sign code for the rest of the city. So part of this work plan was envisioned by staff as an opportunity not only to fix our inconsistencies with the Gilbert decision, but also potentially to condense the number of sign codes into hopefully a singular or maybe less number of sign codes. So for us, it became a bigger work product. And so the expectation is we probably wouldn't have a deliverable in 2018 anyway. It's probably going to get pushed until 2019. And so if we're talking about like a three-to-four month delay, we can still deliver a product in 2019. It'll just be maybe three months later than it otherwise would have been. So that was the reason why the administration suggested the sign code as a good choice to put something aside. The risks are fairly low. Right now, if we would have picked up the Save Cougar Mountain signs from right of way, I think we would have been in trouble because those ones are technically not allowed. But, you know, we're using some common sense, knowing where we are with the sign code right now. So I think the risk is fairly low. I think it is going to be a little bit of a delay to get the work product done, but it'll still get done in 2019, and we'll move it as quickly as we can once we kind of get it back on track. But I needed to find time at PPC, because that actually ends up being kind of my choke point, because we've got topics at PPC through the rest of the year. So I need to pull something off PPC for this to kind of really work.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So Keith, I'm going to ask you a question, but I want to preface it because I don't want you to think it's a tricky question or a critical statement about the agenda, Bill. I want to take note of your thoroughness here in what the process would include, but I want to take it one step back and ask a question. And it has to do with the intent of my, since I was the person who suggested this initially. The intent really was a staff look at the table first, not a noticing and then going out to have a public process first. It really was a proactive internal step rather than a reactive. And so is it possible for the direction to be just exactly what it says, which is to internally take a look at the table in light of the changes that we just made during the moratorium and all that we've learned since 2012 when we adopted the CIP, and see if there might be recommendations to the council of some changes that might be made before we were to decide whether we want to embark on this time-consuming process?
Yes. So if that is what the council would like, I think the administration could provide that by the next council meeting.
It's getting stinky.
The idea is that'll just be the administration's position, right? I think still, you know, to vet that then through a public process at PPC, I mean, if the council wanted to move forward with amending the table, it's going to have to go through PPC and ultimately get decided by the council. So I think I was assuming that we were just going to go. I think there are things that we probably don't want or don't envision in Central that's currently on the table, so there will be some changes that will come out of this when it does happen. So the question is, is do you want to, does the council want to see the administration's kind of scratch list first before we launch a work product? If so, we can do that, I think.
Can you clarify too that if that is the ask and if that is the motion that they do this evening, that the work items that you suggest to be removed for the fuller process, that and the schedule? process, that and the schedule all still fits? Is that, so, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ray.
So sort of a comment along those lines. If we were to do as Councilmember Goodman just suggested, and do a look at what's possibly should be modified first, and then take a look at that, and then really evaluate the magnitude of that change, I think that would help us better inform the urgency with which we'd want to move on some of this issue. So from, from, I know, I'm not asking, shall I ask that as a question?
We are in discussion, question mode, whatever you would like. So you can ask that as a question.
Okay. Just, it seems to me that it would make sense if we could have a little more information on the magnitude of this potential problem before making a determination of how urgent it is. It seems to me that would be a good idea. What do you think?
Also, I know our interim city administrator would like to weigh in on the conversation too.
Just to interject a little bit about timeline. First, next meeting is probably not possible. The reason for that is, I believe DSD staff could probably do that review and economic development staff, but our, part of our protocol is to also get other staff that's involved with land use decisions to review it. And so I would love for those staff to have an opportunity to do that first. That's our protocol before we bring kind of policy considerations back in front of the council. Second thing is, we're entering into a few weeks here where the mayor's office is going to be down-staffed, and I would like to ensure that both the mayor and I have a chance to look at those recommendations before it comes to council, since that is also our protocol. And then lastly, this is the type of item that doesn't lend itself very well to an agenda bill, particularly if we're not directing staff to do anything or you're not taking action to implement anything. And so I would propose that it come back to a work session where you can have a conversation about it.
Did you have a suggested date?
I can, let's, I would propose that we discuss that with council leadership. The next work session is quite full, so that would be something to consider.
Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I would prefer to see a draft following your analysis before deciding on the action proposals in the memo.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Emily, when you're talking about, sorry, I forgot your long title. I was going to say something. Okay, talk about what, at work session. Can you clarify?
Sure. I just think it lends itself to the work session format a little bit better. We can have back-and-forth dialogue on what staff found in their evaluation, and then you could have dialogue about what you think the next action should be. Should it be that staff proceed as outlined in this staff memo with formalizing some recommendations and taking them to PPC, or do you want us to go back and get some more research done on particular land use topics?
Okay.
I think it just fits work session format.
And, and the only reason that I prefer it as an agenda bill is because I think it's a fairly sensitive topic, that we went several years with a fairly unhappy, I'll call it generally community, about what we were getting in the Central Isiqua plan. And I, so I would like a time certain when the analysis will be back before the council for consideration. That's the reason that I, if I, if I knew it was, if I was being told it was going to come back at a certain time, I think maybe that would be one thing, but I don't, maybe you just said it and I didn't listen. So I, I just want to make sure it gets done. So if we need to keep it as an agenda bill, then I'd like to do that.
So let me ask the interim city administrator a couple of questions. June 18th work session, pretty full. July 9th work session, capacity. You were saying not just development services, an economic development review, but all departments. I'm assuming that means a senior leadership team-type review with returning with some information at some point. Is that possible to do by the July 19, 9th work session? If I got that one right?
Yes. Staff could definitely do that right now, and I'm looking at something that's a bit dated. I thought there were two items on July 9th.
Yeah, mine might be dated too.
Water system plan, and I think there's one other that I don't have on the copy in front of me.
And then a clarification for Councilmember Goodman, so.
Oh, and the, sorry, mayor, and the strategic plan. So two, two sizable items? So it depends on what you think the length of conversation is going to be for those.
They're on the 25th.
I'm sorry, those are on the 25th. On, on the 9th, we don't have that in front of us, but I think there are two items on July 9th as well. Just can't recall.
I want to make sure I understand your expectations. At that point in time, it would not be an agenda bill coming back. It would be a council memo saying, here's what the tabletop staff review look like, and here's a potential issues identified and a potential, you'd be actually looking at this, an agenda bill coming forward later on with a motion similar to when you would like to do it. Is that what you're asking?
I would be comfortable with that, if my fellow council members are comfortable with that.
So, discussion?
I would be comfortable with that.
Councilmember Goodman is comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
I would be comfortable with that, too. What I like is setting this expectation, we're going to, we're going to work through what it is specifically we want before making a decision about when to do it. So I think there's still a lot of information that's missing about what the magnitude of this change is, and if we can have something come back on, in early July, which is great, and then we can make a determination at that point at how urgently we want to drive it forward, and whether we want to do it this year, next year, or somewhere way out in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Other, Councilmember Winterstein?
Just for clarification, could, could somebody tell me what that is?
What would be?
He was comfortable with that.
A council memo coming to the July 9th work session, which is the kind of review that Councilmember Goodman described to our director, that our interim city administrator said she would like to have fully vetted internally before it came to the work session, so.
So if we take a vote this evening, it's not on any of the elements in this memo?
Correct.
It's pre-work?
Correct.
Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
The motion would be to, I just provided some revised wording to Councilmember Goodman. She wants to use it. It would be to bring it back to the July 9th work session as the information. Councilmember Hunt.
This is a question about that process. At the work session, we would be discussing, would we be discussing both the content of the land uses as well as the amount of further public planning policy commission meetings, et cetera, and the rest of the timeline? Or would it be focusing on the land use recommendations that are?
I don't think you're going to be getting fully baked recommendations. You're going to be getting a quick review from our staff that says, here are some issues we're highlighting and recommending that we do start a process with the following It's more or less to give you enough information to decide, do I want to do it this year or next year, or urgency to it. More questions? Council President Martz.
I like the idea because I like longer council meetings.
Yeah, I know you do.
I feel like when they're, like, tonight is only going to be maybe an hour-ish, and I feel a lack of a sense of closure.
I think you're done. Anyone else? Any other comments? Councilmember Hunt.
I have a quick comment, which is just that in the strategic planning meetings, we've heard a lot, I think, about, from the community, about being more proactive. And so I generally like the idea of looking at the land uses in a more proactive way rather than a reaction to something that pops up.
Thank you for that comment. I'm just going to double check with the city administrator, interim city administrator, that this is a schedule that we can commit to.
That sounds great. Keith now has a short-term homework assignment to get it to me before I leave, so I have an opportunity to look at it.
It's already done.
This is one of our jobs. Councilmember Goodman.
We have a motion on the table, and I'm not sure I understand, do we let, what do we do with this if we're getting a commitment instead to come to the July 9th work session? Do we let it die? I don't want to vote no on it.
Amend the motion, and if the second agrees?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I think what Emily said was, the motion is okay. We just have clarity on what it is, on what it is. Okay.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of directing the administration to reevaluate the permitted land uses, Table 4.3B, in the Central Isiqua Development and Design Standards, and make recommendations to the city council as to whether changes are needed after the moratorium is lifted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Very good discussion. The next order of business is for good of the order. Do any council members have anything for good of the order? Councilmember Winterstein.
Real quickly, thanks to staff and mayor for this, the thing about the Pickering Trail. I want to add something to your comment about this. When, with this trail opening up, it actually does reconnect on the north end with the Samamish Trail. So people traveling south can get off at 56, I think it is, and travel and get back on without going out on East Lake Samamish, and northbound as well. And I just want to make sure that if people were aware that that connection is there even though it's not shown on this map.
Thank you for doing that. It's very exciting, very exciting. Anything else for good of the order? Councilmember Ray.
I just wanted to recognize Isiqua Police Department and Public Works Operations for their presence at the June 9th farmer's market. They were amazing. They were engaging. They had a line of people, you know, around the block to spend time with them. I think we came across as a really incredibly great city and with really great people, and they were a person charming and engaging. So thank you to everybody who participated in that.
That's fantastic. Anyone else for good of the order? I have a couple of little things to add if we're done. I just wanted to let everybody know that the June 18th council meeting, oh, sorry, that the June 25th council work session has some items, which includes citywide strategic plan and water system plan, as our interim city administrator stated. July 2nd regular council meeting, some of the potential agenda items include Old Town Traffic Calming Project, and that is a funding request for a permanent installation, PFAS pilot study, and that will also be a funding request coming to council. And that's it. There is no executive session this evening, and if there's no further business, we are adjourned at a record-breaking 8:04 PM.